Thank you all for coming. It is 6:00 PM, November 28th, 2023, Legislatorial Regular Schedule Council Meeting. And call up the order.
Just a few.
Shulte?
Here.
Shumw?
Here.
Stanville?
Here.
Walter?
Yeah.
Scott?
Here. You got one? Okay.
Let's get the agents to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia State. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
For approval agenda, I want to put item number eight, the sweeper. We have a person going to buy our sweeper from us. So just hold on by here. So with that said, we'll put the sweeper at number eight to approve the agenda with the section of number eight.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I would like to add number nine.
Hold on. We gotta, we gotta do this sequentially, so we gotta.
Okay.
I second the amendment.
Prove this eight and then we'll move on to the next.
Okay, yep. So, so you seconded the number eight?
I did.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, that one's done. Okay, now you have the number nine.
Yes.
Lana?
Um, the president pro temp. It does say, Sam, it was for a year.
Right.
And it says on November 20th or as soon as after.
Mm-hmm.
That we do have to have another vote to decide who the president pro temp.
Good memory. Forgot about that.
Thank you.
So then we'll have the council pick another VP, right? That's what you want, Donald, for number nine?
Well, I just, we have to go with the.
Yeah.
The guidelines and the rules.
For sure. Okay.
Thanks for keeping up on that.
All right, so pro temp number nine, choose for one more year. And.
I'll second.
Second by Sandra? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Yes. Mr. Scott, good work.
That works, yes, sir.
Yep, I appreciate that. Okay, now we have the two items on there. Everybody knows approved agenda as presented with the implications. Okay, any public comment other than what we got going on today? Yes, sir.
Just to reiterate, I never really got a good answer as to why the website is not up to date with agendas and minutes.
Okay.
Um, I was told the reason why the agendas aren't on it is because they weren't given to him in a timely fashion. I was told he got those this afternoon.
I give them to them. They end up not getting, I keep getting people sending me stuff last minute, too. So really, I get to them, like, what, the next, like, Monday?
Yeah.
Sometimes Tuesday morning if there's update.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, I mean, it just, it, it all depends. I mean, usually, they, they come in, but a lot of times when things change, or, um, Scott's looking them up right now to see, because I, I don't know if OMA actually, Open Meetings Act requires posting of agenda, um, because the agenda technically is, as Scott said, is technically fluid until you guys vote to approve that agenda. So the agenda always approved changes, so I mean, not saying we don't, we don't try to put it out there when we can, but obviously, when it keeps changing, that becomes a problem act, too, because we don't want to put an agenda out on, say, Monday, and then all of a sudden it changes four more times, and then we're putting a bunch of different versions out there. This is gonna confuse people.
Okay, but we have, we would have an original agenda posted. Whether we made it or subtracted from it.
Right.
At least the public would have some idea.
Yeah, which that's fine, but I mean, from, I mean, like I said, I'll do whatever you guys instruct, but I think if you do that, then you create another confusion, because then people are gonna be like, well, why was this taken off the agenda? And, or they show up because they got, you know, they went on Facebook or went on the website at this time, and then three days later it's off, and they show up to the meeting because their agenda item was on there, and then they want to talk about it, and that's no longer on there.
Okay. But we do have some public comments.
Well, Scott's looking it up, right?
Yes, sir.
You trying to figure out, let's go, we're gonna, we're gonna let this get solved throughout our meeting, okay? We're gonna get pushing the button here. Consent agenda, minutes of the council meeting, accounts payable, revenue expenditure report, and the balance sheet. Everybody get a chance to look at that. Everybody. Get some information.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sound off.
Okay, any discussion? Stand down, roll call, please.
Shulte?
Yes.
Shumw?
Yes.
Stanville?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, thank you. Hey, oh, police report, Captain. Is that. Amy Dentor?
Uh, Amy Dentor. I'm the captain of the sheriff's office.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, just the last couple, had a few things going on. Um, so the sheriff's office was the one, was the party that asked to go from 80 hours down to 40 hours. That was us asking because of, like anyone else around the country, we're having a harder time staffing. We had 12 retirements within the last year. Um, we are in a better place now. We're doing, doing better than most agencies. And we approached the, the village after some current concerns because of the lack of staffing. Just having a deputy here four days a week for 10 hours wasn't very much. We approached them offering to add that position back. Uh, we do have a deputy, Deputy Rashaan Allen, that's, uh, planning on starting January 1st upon you guys as approval for that second position. Uh, Rashaan comes to us, you guys will, you guys will love him. He comes to us from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. He came up here to go to law school. He's currently going, going to Cooley Law School. Um, he was an officer down there for several years. He was a Division One NCAA football player. I think the kids in the schools and stuff are really, really gonna like to him. Well spoken, smart guy. Um, he's excited to do some community policing up here with Chris Hagerman. Um, I know there's been a lot of concerns, um, over hours and that kind of thing. I think some of that will smooth out with having two deputies as far as seeing us up here on a daily basis. There should be very few days when you don't have a deputy up here. The plan is to keep Chris on days. He'll be mostly involved with schools, but then have Rashaan work opposite, uh, sk- uh, opposite schedule from him. He'll be an evening type, type, uh, deputy. Um, they'll share weekends, so you'll see Chris two or three days during the week, and sometimes you'll see him, uh, on the weekends, and then if, uh, some, once, one or the other will be here on the weekend. Uh, Rashaan will still be helping out with the schools. Chris is gonna focus on schools, but Rashaan, too, we expect him to be in the schools. It'll be afternoon type thing and attending some of the events, that kind of thing, doing the community policing thing. Um, I know I had a handful of questions that were sent to me that, that came up, um, in accounting for Chris Hagerman's hours. Um, we do provide a report that doesn't, doesn't report every single minute of every shift that he worked. What I think we could do to make this easier is to, I could send Jessica a schedule ahead of time, so that every 28 days when we have a schedule, I send you the schedule, and I can explain to you how the schedule reads. You can see who's working which day and kind of what hours they are. Like I said, Chris will be generally more of like a seven to five, eight to six day shift guy. Rashaan's probably gonna work like a mid, or a noon to tenish, but maybe a little bit later or earlier depending. Um, another question that came up, um, when Hagerman's, when our guys are on vacation, sick time, that kind of thing, does somebody fill in? Uh, the answer is no, that vacation and sick time and that kind of thing is, is figured, figured into the 80 hours, but when they, that's the, the rare occasion when someone is, when they're both off or something, there's gonna be a rare occasion where you may not have a cop on, but most days, given they're on 10-hour shifts, you're gonna have somebody every single day. But I think if you guys had your own agency, you'd have to provide sick time. You'd have to provide time off, vacation time. Training factors into that, too. We, we do train quite a bit, but it's not, we try not to overdo it, but there's certainly, we do crisis intervention training, and we do, um, annual trainings in service, defensive tactics, um, first aid, CPR, firearms. There's a lot of stuff that we keep our folks up on that to push more and more these days is that we gotta do the training to, to provide you guys with the what right quality deputies up here. Um, it was asked if overtime and that kind of stuff is, if you guys are responsible for paying that, no, that's figured into the, any overtime, additional staff and stuff that comes from our detective bureau, all that stuff is covered in the contract. You don't get billed additional for that. I did have our detective sergeant grab the money pool, what our detectives had worked on over the last two years, and he came up with about 210 hours that the detective bureau gave, um, worked for the village based on some criminal sexual conducts, some child abuses, and embezzlement. Uh, we have cases that sometimes they work 50 or 80 or hours on, and there's no additional bill for that. That's included in the contract. Um, our officers that work in Al County, we have three or four per shift at work, days or nights, you know, 24/7. Those guys are stepping up, or those guys, those guys are passing through up there, and they have been. Um, they're gonna continue to that. I think if anything, we generally will see that in a report for additional hours. That's probably underestimated, because our guys, they're, and I'm trying to get after them about being more specific, about documenting the, the time that they're up here, so you guys, you guys can see that, but overall, I think we provide a decent quality service for you guys, and that's, we wanna provide excellent service to, to the village. We really do, so it's important to us. Um, students remain concerned, like I said, if that's gonna continue, um, I think they'll see probably more of us and more of us in like the afternoon, football games, basketball games. Having Rashaan stop in there, community events, we'll have more of that. Um, seven days a week coverage, pretty much every day. There's gonna be an occurrence here or there where we, we have a day where you guys don't have somebody on. Um, we'll certainly respond to any priorities or any calls. We're not gonna let a call stack whenever our Al County deputies will come up and respond to that call. And then, again, I think I covered as, if Chris is a dedicated school liaison officer, he'll be the primary guy, but Rashaan will be helping out. And like I said, I think your kids are gonna really like Rashaan and like seeing him in the schools, so. That's where I'm at with things, but I'm open for questions.
I just wanna make sure you guys know, which I know I've talked to Scott Buller about it, too, share. Whenever these things happen, make sure it doesn't happen during, we want the full police enforcement while the kids are in school and school's happening. So while school's in session, make sure that if it's, it's something just for regular work out here, the town, that's fine, but I wanna make sure that the town, the school is protected while you guys are here, the 80 hours a week, while school's in works or going to school or leaving out of school. That's our main priority, why we go back to 80 hours among other things, but that's our main. I think all the people here at the council wanna make sure our school's safe, like you guys have been doing. That's awesome. The kids like, like, uh, our other, our deputy we got now, just everybody's doing great that way, but I just wanna make sure that I make that clear, that we don't wanna miss anybody saying they had the day off that was during a school day.
Okay, so you want, you want your school hours Monday through Friday covered 100%?
Well, how have we been doing that? That's one of our top priorities, so if you're gonna.
Yeah.
If you're gonna slide somewhere, slide somewhere else, but try to keep the.
Yeah.
Bottom priority with the school. That's, that's all I'm saying.
My concern, like I said, with having the two deputies and wanting, wanting to keep somebody kind of more in the evenings is making sure that the, for some life, work-life balance type thing, that they each get a couple of weekends off, which would make my day shift guy pick up a couple of weekends, which may leave a couple shifts a month at most, like four, where there isn't somebody on, but there would certainly be somebody in here by like noon, noon or so to check on schools, so.
Just, the school's my biggest thing.
Yeah.
Everybody thinks it can't happen to them, but it's, I just, I wanna do whatever we can. With the 80 hours that we got, to make sure that if anybody has any second thoughts, top priority is our school.
Okay.
Everything else can come second.
And well, that'll be clear to us, for sure.
Yeah. And you guys have done an excellent job, and maybe you'd like your guys. The, the school's been very happy with the collaboration, the dog going in there, and it's just been happy. Just want to continue with that.
Very good. Make that a, make that a priority.
And if you guys go in there and you think there's something that they're missing, that they're not getting on to, then we need to collaborate with that, too, because we wanna make sure. I went up there and I talked to the, um, principal and superintendent, and they seem like they're staying on top of things and keep everybody protected, but that's, that's my, I appreciate that. Thank you for that information. Do you have any more information, anybody?
You said there will be seven day week coverage?
Yes.
Hours of seven days?
There'll, there'll be an occasional day because of training, because of vacation or a sick day or something. There'll be occasional days where no one, no one is here, but it'll be, it'll be pretty rare.
And then when that happens, there's three guys in route that are just floating around.
Yeah, we have Al County carers. If you, if there's a call for service, we're not gonna hold a call for service. We're gonna respond and take your call.
I definitely.
You, I'm sorry.
Sir, I definitely love the idea of them being at the games at night, because I think that is very important, because we all know things happen at games, not all the time, but having the presence of an officer, I think, is really important for not only the kids to see, but also the parents to see.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly, it turned into problems, and it's, for us, it's a relationship building type thing for our, our deputies, so.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
We keep the bicycle tuned up for you guys, and if there's anything else, let us know it.
Yeah, I know Matt Wilson loved reading that thing. He, he still misses it. He still talks about this, this little gel time. He loved it.
He texts me about every three or four weeks. Yeah, so anything that you need from the council, then we appreciate the 80 hours coming back. Thank you.
Okay.
So when you get the contract drawn up, we don't have that down yet, do we? The contract complete?
I think we're almost done with it, though.
Okay.
It should be, so it's gone through, it's been through the county commissioners, I believe, so.
Okay.
I'll get the undersheriff, though, make sure we're squared away on tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You can go anywhere, buddy.
Yep.
You don't have to have a card yet.
I do, I have cards. And I'm gonna plan on trying to make meetings maybe a couple times a year or something. I know Chris said some, but just to, you know, put a face with the sheriff's office up in here occasionally and touch base with you guys.
We all know we have very busy, everybody very busy lives everywhere.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll use a microphone. You need anything else? Yep. Take care. Yep, anytime.
Just a second. Sir? I can send that one.
You're more welcome to safety than likely, but thank you and.
Okay, I'm gonna take you off. I get the notification.
Hope you're glad, Rocky.
So, do you, um, just, I mean, is there an idea of what the, is there gonna be a difference in the prior contract to the new contract?
The contract is staying the same, I believe, with a 5% increase.
Yeah, yeah, it's kinda like.
Which is just to cover inflation.
Okay. Yep. All right. I think it's a few bucks more, but it's not. I, I think it was like $5,000 or $7,000 or something like that. I, I apologize. I glanced at it. It was just a little bit more.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered, obviously, one of the, um, one of the things that I, because you mentioned the detective service, so.
We don't have.
Obviously, that's paid for with.
There's, there's always some, there's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's illustrated, possible, right, to factor in some of that stuff, but it's, it's factored in, if, you know, it's one of those things, if you don't use it, you don't use it, you run it way over, and.
Yeah.
But it's a balancing act. We've got.
No, I just, or at least when you mentioned the detective service as being part of the contract, wouldn't that detective service be covered regardless if we had a contract? Because of that investigation that you guys would do for the fact that we pay county taxes for the sheriff's department?
Uh, yeah, I mean, certainly.
Okay. I just wanted, but I didn't clarify that, because obviously, that would be, you know, if something happened in, in White Rose and Al County, we didn't have a contract with White Rose, you guys would still have to, your detective service is a part of the tax that we already paid the county for that service, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're just, I mean, you're actually paying for a service specifically for White Rose.
Right, right, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. You're good.
And Josh Rocky's our DDA president, so he's our, our other part of the program with the Tiffen District, so he, he's in charge of the industrial park and the downtown area development, so. So we might collaborate with that, and we appreciate the extended 80 hours.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we're, we're, I think it'll be obviously more, much more effective to provide a good service up here, so.
Yep, get with, and we'll get that going, and we'll, on January 1st, we'll make that happen.
What's the name of the new deputy?
Uh, Rashaan Allen.
Allen?
Yeah. Yep, you can't miss him. Great big tall guy, so.
I just got a job as Alabama.
He's a, he's a great guy, so.
All right.
He's got a great story to speak to him, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Take care, stay safe.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, what?
What is this USA Blue Book 100-pack sample stuff? Is that for the water testing?
USA Blue Book sample packets.
Yeah, the reagent packets.
Water testing?
Yeah. Yeah, we do a lot of that this year. Okay, I'm gonna give it to Scott Buller, our attorney. How are you doing today?
Great, uh, thank you for asking. Um, so here it is. So in checking on the OMA, just to, if you know, the first issue.
Yes.
Open Meetings Act.
Yep.
Um, while OMA, Open Meetings Act requires a public vote to give public notice when a meeting, it has no requirement that the public notice include an agenda or a specific statement as to the purpose of a meeting. No agenda format is required by the Open Meetings Act. I double-checked the local ordinance. Uh, I did it pretty fast, but I didn't see anything even in our, our own ordinance that obligates us to post an agenda in advance of a meeting. Um, kinda like what Mr. Rocky was saying, is that the agenda really is fluid until you guys vote on it. I know we kinda touched on it last week, or the last meeting, as to when the agenda actually gets galvanized, and that's that the first, it's up here at the very beginning, what we do every time. So, um, I guess the, the long and the short of it is, if this village is so inclined to post the agendas, it's cheap insurance. I mean, it is what it is, but there's nothing that obligates us to do, so. Um, moving on, White Rose is still pending. I checked the register of actions, uh, before I came here. Uh, the 425 agreement is probably the most pending important issue that's still, uh, on the horizon. We are, Jessica and I have got the notices out, right? Uh, and, uh, I believe the hearing on this matter at the Ingham County Commissioners will be December 12th, I think is the date. That sound right, Jessica?
That sounds right.
Okay. On the 425 Leroy Township tax abatement.
Yep.
Uh, effectively giving that parcel back to Leroy for their tax.
Day coverage.
Yep.
Way through our trend.
Yep, so, um.
You know White Rose was sold?
What?
Why?
I have not, no.
So, well, I hope to get more, but I, I have the information.
It's all hearsay.
Oh, okay, well, go ahead and tell me, Scott Buller. I only told our, uh, ordinance officer.
Yeah, I've heard from a number of people, including one of the tenants down at the, at the White Rose property there, that Mr. Rippon has effectively sold the property. Um, there's been a number of names and parties who, who may have been the buyer, um, but my, it, from what I understand, it sounds like it's just a matter of paperwork needs finished.
Wow.
Uh, so I mean, whether or not it's true, or whether or not, you know, things could fall through at the last second, there's always that possibility, but it seems like, from what I understand, it's done.
All right, well, that's, uh, that's interesting, you know, in a couple of ways for me on the legal side. One, I guess if the stars line up and we get a new owner, uh, and they abide by all the rules, great. Uh, on the flip side of it, um, if, one of the things that pops up in my mind is that technically, whenever you have a pending code enforcement violation and you sell that parcel, um, you're actually kinda prohibited from selling that parcel, because there's a pending action with the local governor, which I guess we, on the information, and I'll do my own digging, see if the conveyance actually happened, and to see where we assert ourselves or not, because, like I said, if, if it seems to work out well, I don't know if we wanna jam that thing up, you know?
Well, I mean, again, I apologize, that was your Sam, but I just wanted you to know much of what we do.
Hey, I appreciate that.
Forward, happy news, good news, forward movement, is what we'd like, so.
The other question that I would have, regardless of this deal, if it exists and goes through, is how would the, um, conditional zoning agreement, would that stick with the property? Or because of changing hands, that agreement would be null and void?
That property, um, I'll double-check it, but the most that Jay Rippon could convey with that property is the conditional agreement that he has.
Mm-hmm.
However, I have to double-check the writing on that conditional zoning. It is plausible that the conditional zoning, all those conditions that we gave Rippon, would not be able to be conveyed to the new owner, so the new owner would have to revert to a more restrictive, um, zoning policy.
Right.
So I'd have to double-check that.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah.
But I, in other words, Rippon cannot give more than what he has. I know that much. He cannot say, you're wide open. You're giving a million bucks.
Yeah.
Okay, what else you got, Mr. Scott?
Those are really the only pending issues I have, and, whoa.
The other program, nothing, Merry Christmas?
As to the MML or?
Yeah.
No, I, I've got a, my letter I'm still working on, and all the, the council gave me green light to put that letter together. I was all sick last week, um, but the letter I wanted to be a little more sophisticated than just a letter with a thread. I wanted to, as I mentioned last week, put together, just a brief synopsis of what I think the courts and how they would rule in our favor to the MML to help convince them to move forward on paying us out, so. Uh, hoping to get that done this, this week or next week. And I'll forward it to the city, or the village in advance of me actually jamming it out, too, so.
Okay, any other questions for our lawyer? Any other questions? Did you get your answer, maybe, from the, so the agenda, we can do rough agenda, but I would think, we always put on our, like, if we had, like, the street for $100,000 or thousand dollars, something that was on there in case people wanted to come in, or if we made the parking different, or something like that, was always on the agenda. We knew that was solid, but maybe some of it wouldn't be completely on there.
Well, I mean, it would've been nice to have it out there that, you know, Representative from the Sheriff's Department was gonna be here today.
Yep. It is, you know, I got you. Okay, so that said, then we can go on to the next. Um, engineering reports, which is, hey, where, did we have any, right, Jane, we're all good?
No, uh, Jessica and Josh and I sent a meeting, uh, for a grant for, uh...
Five view. The grand private view?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For a grant for a hundred and seventy thousand for a high view for, uh, with payment, so, just send the papers on that, it's the best sign, so...
Ooh, awesome. Eighty-five, I thought, I see.
Yeah.
That's nice, so, but we have to come up with eighty-five thousand? I think we have the front money.
For a high view?
What?
For a high view?
Yeah, I think, whatever you get, a grant, you have the front.
Yeah, I thought it was a lot more than that. I thought it was a tune of like, two hundred or three hundred thousand.
I see eighty-five thousand.
Cause it was, I think it was like a half a million dollar project.
Yeah, they're doing it in that pizza building, they're gonna do the first, first section with one of the grants, and then, because we didn't get approved for, um, they didn't approve both grants, so they're looking at the one for the first section, and then the second one, and the twenty-five that is then...
Yeah, the second section from about where Applegate's driveway is, back through Tech Drive, and back down Mason Court. Um, the other one, um, they said we might have a little bit of trouble getting, because we've already got this grant.
Right.
But it's, it would help a lot if we finish our income study.
Yeah, yeah, one seventy, one seventy, and then, I think I might've seen the eighty-five would probably be the engineering grant. That probably was. All right.
Um, real quick on the engineering report is, did you guys do the, um, sidewalk concrete grinding?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We're still planning, we're still planning on it.
Okay, cause somebody brought it to my attention that they thought over where they put down the new concrete for Main Street by the party store, that there's a, a significant lift there. I didn't, I walked by, I didn't, it wasn't clear to me, but...
There's, there's a little bit.
Okay.
And we, we figured we'd probably get that too, but...
Okay.
Mostly we're gonna focus on our stuff around the, on the village hall and stuff, so...
Yeah, cause somebody asked me, I said, "I think they may have ground it yet, but I don't know."
No, no, we, we planned on, we were gonna wait till after Thanksgiving, and this week, or tomorrow's, um, lights, and we've gotta take our mower back into the, uh, dealer. We either have a bad stator, um, or something, uh...
Again.
Yeah, it's not, of course, it's out of warranty, but we're gonna, uh, bitch out of it and take it up there. Yeah, so it's, it's not charging, so we're gonna take that up there and drop that off, and we'll have the trailer, and then we can stop and get that concrete grinder up, bring it back.
Okay.
Cause it's, but it's pretty bad across the road, and I have a south side of the building that it treats that, for sure. So, we're gonna try to shape that up, so it's not a trip hazard.
Is that from Home Depot and Waverly Road? Is that where we get, oh, we get it from Sunbelt?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And they weren't very, uh, forgiving when you said the lawnmower came back not charging? So, X mark people?
I, I haven't sent people one up yet.
Okay.
Take it up there, so, we gotta call them and get that set up, take it in, and then call the, uh, concrete planer.
Okay, all right. Bummer on that X mark, I mean, that is a straight line with the...
Wouldn't they have had to take the stator off to do the head gasket?
I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah.
They could, I don't know.
We didn't have a problem with the battery when we went up there.
Right.
Advocate reports, anybody advocate reports?
Um, only thing, Katie Vincent, oh, she emailed us, told us that there's a mailbox in North Main, that, um...
Stays out.
Stays out, yeah, but...
Kristen, okay.
Katie, John Vincent? Yeah, but we got, they put, I like to spell out, so, she was still wanting me to put it in the meeting, so that you guys knew about it.
It's just where the, you seen that Main Street where you go up there, and the road just curves to the left where it heads to the new road? Nobody's faded the lines yet, right? No lines, but...
I don't know.
Or, no. How do we get that done? Will we, gotta call the county again?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think, now it's too old.
Really? I think we're gonna have it in summer next week. Honestly, I think it's gonna be warmer next week than it is this one.
But, yeah, it's supposed to get up in the forties.
I mean, the theory of the county would probably hit that when they, or they only do Grand River when they come through, right?
I know, I know, I know, private guy, maybe he'll hit it, uh, his last name is Boris, Boris...
Dave Boris.
Oh, Dave Boris, Pizza Row.
Yep.
I wonder if he'll have it, he's, he'll probably work.
I can, I can call, cause I have to know that they're, they're friends.
Well, great, ask him if he wants to do that little section for us.
Okay.
That would be very nice, thank you, Sandra.
He's very welcoming.
We'll have...
His name's Randy.
Yeah, oh, Randy Boris. I know, I know Karen on that, and that Karen on that, that was Karen on that, on that Karen.
I don't know.
You don't know that?
I don't know the recipe.
Glad Deborah had a cheesecake made for you for getting that wrong.
Oh, okay, well, definitely I'll be on it tonight.
I still get that.
She, she wants the recipe. I don't know, though, it's gonna get that.
I'll stop that cheesecake then. All right, any advocate reports other than that? Anything else you've seen in the town that we're missing before we start getting some snow? Well, all right, all right, good. New business, Michael Stanfield, Subtude Crossing Guard. I'm assuming that's you, hi Neville.
Hi.
Would you like to help us out on the Crossing Guard?
Yeah.
All right. Have any recommendations for the council, getting hired on here? You're, uh, meet the criteria of, uh, safety or, well, right, okay? Go ahead, Vanna, Vanna.
I can't say a word, I'm staying out of it.
You can't do it.
I'm gonna stay silent on this one.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to, uh, hire Mr. Michael Stanfield, part-time crossing guard for the village of Wylandville. Would you like your second?
I'll second that.
Sandra's second. Any other questions? Scott Gould, you seen any, I mean, that didn't work, right?
That works, Vanna's, there's a relationship?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I was staying quiet.
That's our, right?
Eleven thirty-three.
Yep, so eleven thirty-three, do the hour again, okay. Yep, we, it's better than having Jessica out there, you're gonna give me a reflect.
Oh, a hundred percent, you're right.
All right, woke up, please.
Sophie?
Yes.
Shonwa?
Yes.
Uh, some statements, Walter?
Yes.
Good job.
Yes. Welcome aboard. We also have a broom to get down to on that. Zoning and outdoor storage amendment.
So, so that's the stuff you guys wanted from Chris last meeting.
He's not here.
He wrote up, he wants me to kind of just go over it and look through it, um, cause we haven't done, uh, I don't remember the hour, you don't have whatever you want, but they still have to do, um, a public hearing and all that, too.
I think we should wait until, we'll just wait on the zoning and orders, storage amendment that Jim Wright was working on with us that we haven't seen from Chris Corey. I won't see that until about January. Okay, everybody okay with skipping that?
Some motion to table, until January.
Yep, that work.
Who's motioning to table?
Yep.
I will make a motion to table the discussion of zoning and outdoor storage until the January meeting.
Second.
Okay, the second, all in line, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him a aye. Table. Okay, Ryan Jones' raise. I recommended the council, he got more licenses for a two-dollar-an-hour raise for Ryan Jones, as requested, when we hired him in, once he got the valid licenses that would be compatible with the shape.
So, would that bring him to the upper range of what the job posting was?
Thirty.
Yep.
Thank you, cause I was gonna actually ask that question too, so, thank you, Sandra.
I recommend.
Shonwa?
Second.
Second.
Second, my, same discussion. All right, woke up.
Sophie?
Yes.
Shonwa?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes. Anybody got a chance to look over our 2024 schedule?
I did have a question, where are we doing the committee that took this year? Yes, sir.
I thought we were, I thought we were wanting a committee in January to...
To help you out, yeah.
Right, that we could all assist you.
If you gotta, if you get a group of people together, that is kind of the grid strength we're on, one, because it's so hard to get people to want to, oh, uh, quick Friday.
Right. Well, that's right. Yeah, the last time we had discussed this after the picnic, I thought we had agreed upon forming a committee to have Jessica bring in, yeah, more things for like little kids, and, cause little kids definitely, yeah, maybe moving it to the high school parking lot.
And then...
Yeah, so, farmers do that, yeah.
What weekend in September was that again?
Fourth weekend in September.
I'm gonna concentrate on the fourth weekend in September, the one in July, just, I'm so overwhelmed with what I do, I'm not available.
You got your proper...
So, the fourth weekend in September? Yeah, is that what you guys want, that's September twenty-eighth?
Yeah, I'll get the car clubs to come in, and, so...
That'd be awesome. I, I can help out farm.
Like I said, I can go through that one catalog, get a bunch of things, I was talking about with the swimming pool, and sanding, burying, and things, and the plotter with the rubber duckies, and things like that. So, I think that was just...
Don't forget the rubber duckies.
Forget the rubber duckies, so they can get rubber ducks.
Well, not so much down here, but here.
Is that here?
Yeah.
So, we gotta look, so we should...
Cause there was a lot of kids this year, there was a lot of kids.
Oh, yeah. And ran into a few, too.
Uh, cool, the only potential wrinkle that I see, and I don't, I'm not proposing a change, but I did notice that the second meeting in November is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and I don't know if that's gonna cause problems, if people are traveling, and I think...
You should play that one by ear, too, like, you know, a lot going on.
I saw that too, because with school, how they do the time off, and a lot of people, they get off work, and they're gonna be, like you said, traveling, they wanna be early to avoid traffic.
Yeah, I don't know if that would affect any, anybody on the council, but it's the only potential problem that I saw.
I'm good.
I'd say we just leave it and do it happens.
Okay.
And then, when the title comes, we'll see if we have anything on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm sitting, I can't wait, but...
So, we don't have to recommend any on that, where everybody's good, that considered look over, is that like a motion?
I'll have the final one done for next meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion on it. All right, Comcast proposal, see if you're gonna take that one, or?
Um, I mean, I don't know, Jessica, you, I think you were the one that got this together, right?
Yeah, I got the proposal when I gave it to Josh to look at, cause he was gonna look between WOW and Comcast.
Yeah, I, I, my only involvement was when we did the, Ripman kind of with Comcast focuses, I asked them if there was anything that they could do with, if we signed up with them, having the DPW building and the village building on one bill. We had been trying to get a cost save that way, so, I'll let Josh speak as to whether or not that is...
It looks like they're true, that's two separate entities and two separate buildings, so, really good discount.
Gonna be two different selves.
Um, one of the things I don't like about it is that they lock you into a thirty-six month contract, they state what your different increases are gonna be, very on this contract, they really don't say that, uh, or the price is gonna be, um, so I have our Comcast product and WOW, where I've both are looking, I have them providing quotes, which I will have for the next meeting for you guys, just so you can compare apples to apples. Um, one of the suggestions I might have for the DPW would be a, um, business continued reality, um, service, which basically would be a backup internet that runs off the cell network in case the DPW's internet went down, they actually have a backup, cause obviously they're in it for weather and other related things, um, security-wise, but, um, but that's, I mean Comcast's difference is, I looked over, since we've taken over the IP for the village, I looked at the historical connection, and besides power outage, there hasn't been any connection interruption to the village building at all. Um, so, it's hard to talk reliability when it comes to this building, cause obviously WOW has been reliable here. Um, so, and the difference really is gonna be, you have faster speed and cheaper with WOW, and then Comcast is a bigger corporation, so you might get more reliability, you know, a little bit different service, so, um, but I think it's fair-minded to bring you guys both proposals, and see which one is, you know, cost-effective, and, you know, which one would be the best option. Um, or even doing, you know, with that, we could always do a mix bag too, where it's like, say, the village office is on Comcast, and DPW is on WOW, or vice versa, you know, to kind of differentiate the, um, you know, the service, because it doesn't look like either one of them do a discount because you have two services. Like, it's, they treat them as two different buildings, two different entities, essentially, so, you're really not getting a combined difference between them.
So, you basically want, what you're saying, they should basically want to table this until?
Till the next meeting, I'll have the numbers from WOW too, and then I'll also have a couple, um, I wanna look at a couple different options for Comcast for different speeds, um, because they just have five hundred, but obviously they have a gig, they have other options too, so, I'd like to be able to show you guys the numbers.
Oh, wow, and then the Comcast?
Yeah, yeah, then that, and you guys can make more informed decisions on which one is better, plus I can give you more metrics between the two, so that you know, hey, this is what Comcast is offering directly, and this is what WOW is, and this is how they compare, or...
Right, right, and it's something. Motion to table the Comcast proposal, second, excuse me, until the next meeting?
And I'll second that.
Second by Sandra, the discussion, you seen none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him a aye. Pass. All right, Scott Gould, what do we do, uh, our buddy Chris Corey showed up, that we tabled the zoning ordinance, which was number two, what do we do, can we go back to it?
Yeah, I think so, I've been, uh, motion...
Motion to reopen it back up, because Chris Corey showed up?
Yep.
I recommended the council that they can reopen the zoning and outdoor storage amendment, because Chris Corey just showed up here at six forty PM.
So, move.
Second that's...
Second by Sandra, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post him a aye. Hi, Chris, how you doing?
Hey, everyone, uh, sorry I'm late.
Oh, don't worry about that, it's all yours now.
All right, so we got a couple of zoning amendments that, uh, Jim Wright and I are recommending here, um, they're not really related to each other, but, uh, I figured we move them as one, um, if the council is amenable to that. First one, our commercial districts allow single-family homes to remain in place, continue to be used, don't treat them as non-informities, there's no restrictions on them, et cetera, as long as they continue to use as single-family homes. Uh, we have had one such home that was converted to a business, and has been converted back to a home. Uh, Jim has some building code concerns with that, because the requirements for a business and all were very different, and to kind of yo-yo back and forth is, creates some issues, uh, and he would like to stop that remedy at the zoning level. So, the first one, uh, keeps the situation the same for any house that continues to be a house, doesn't lose that status, uh, you know, it'll be sold, it can be vacant for a while, so long as it continues to be a house. But any house that's converted to a business cannot go back to being a residential house anymore, that's what the amendment would say, uh, so that we don't run into any of those, those types of issues going forward. The second one is a term that's come up, uh, well, particularly forty-six, ninety-six Grand River, but in other contexts as well, and that is outdoor storage, which obviously is important to some industrial businesses to be able to have their outdoor storage and logistics, uh, as part of their business operation. We do have zoning rules around it, requires a special use permit, requires screening fence, and that sort of thing. Um, we've had some enforcement difficulties, because we don't have a definition of what outdoor storage is in the zoning ordinance, so we've had people say, "Well, how do you know that's outdoor storage? How long does it have to be outside for it's stored? What is the definition of outdoor?" It gets a little silly, but without anything to lean on the ordinance, that's what can happen. So, then the other one is a proposed definition of outdoor storage, which would read, "The keeping in an unroofed area of any goods, junk, material, merchandise, equipment, inoperable vehicles, or trailers in the same place for more than twenty-four hours." So, it answers that how-long question, with the twenty-four hours, it's got a list of what types of things, and, you know, being stored outside counts as outdoor storage, et cetera, uh, refers to unroofed areas, so putting some, having something under a roof, sunscreen, white walls, counts as outdoors. That all answers a number of questions that have come up in the past, so we're trying to kind of cover them all in that one sentence. Uh, with that, obviously, any questions, revisions, or, um, you know, comments, uh, we'll take, we can make changes, or if you wanna move these forward, uh, the action tonight would be schedule a public hearing. We're not going to schedule for tonight, so you can't take official action, um, but if you aren't amenable to these, then scheduling a public hearing would be appropriate.
The only issue that I foresee with the outdoor storage, granted I've always been a proponent with defining this, um, and curbing that activity there, is the way this is written pretty substantially in, uh, Little Dusty's Auction House, being that occasionally they do have large items that they cannot reasonably fit inside their building, that because of the nature of the business, may sit there for a week prior to one of their customers purchasing it.
Okay.
And by twenty-four hours, that wouldn't really enable them to do that anymore. I, I don't know...
Could they get a special, special use permit for something like that?
Yeah.
They could, for that particular site, you guys have denied a special use permit for that in the past.
Okay.
And, and it would have to be fenced in, so you wouldn't be able to see it, which could be problematic for Little Dusty's.
The auction house.
Oh. So, why not make it a week or two?
Well, and that's, that's kind of the rub, is I don't, I don't know, by making Well, and that's, that's kind of the rub, is I don't, I don't know by making it a week to appease and, or not to appease, but to not ruffle any feathers with Little Dusty's, is that having it be a week kind of defeats the purpose of outdoor storage with the other more industrial businesses.
Just from what I've seen, I'd be worried about, well, we moved it 10 feet over. I mean, I'd be afraid of, they would play games with that one week and, and it's tough to track something for a week. I mean, we would effectively have to take pictures, I mean, if it got out of the court.
Yeah.
The court might say, do you have pictures from Monday to Monday of every day that thing sat there? And that may be problematic to even enforce.
Well, what about stating 48 hours? That gives them two days, so if it sells, they can contact the person, say, we can't keep it stored for you any longer than 48 hours.
Well, I mean, they're, presumably they're going to obtain the item that they're selling. I know in previous auctions, a truck on a trailer.
Correct.
Sat outside in the parking lot for two weeks because they buy it, then they list it, then the auction runs for a week, and then the new owner prospectively has a week to pick it up. So it's not unfathomable that that type of business would have something like that for more than a week or even two. So I don't, I don't know, Chris, in this instance, I know that we, the council has denied special use for that property, but could a special use permit be granted for a specific business on that property?
It could be, I mean, the fact that you denied it before, it was years ago, so there's definitely, there's a limit in zoning ordinance. So you get denied, you can't apply for the same thing for a year, but we're talking five, six years ago now. So it could be applied for again on the same property. You could also, and especially use associated with the site plan, right? So if Little Dusty's came in and they gave themselves a little fence that just went around kind of their building or maybe to the side of their building and fenced in an area where they could keep things however long they wanted because it was fenced in and they got a special use permit for it, that would be accepted. Obviously, sort of the politics of that site and the landlord and the other tenants, that may be a little more complicated than it may otherwise be. But for any, in a vacuum, if they said, hey, look, we have auction items, they come in, they're big, we got to store them outside. Okay, fence in a little area, or a big you think you need, doesn't have to be a whole site, just fence in a little area and come to us for approval and put up the fence and then you're good. The other thing that occurred to me that you could conceivably do is allow for some sort of temporary outdoor storage permit to be issued for like up to seven or 14 days. It wouldn't require you to come to council or get a special use permit or even fence anything in. It'd just be like, hey, I have this thing, I'm doing this at auction and I don't know how long it's going to be, but I just need two weeks to have it outside without being bothered, right? And you go to Jim and he signs off on the permit, you put your thing out there, 14 days later, you gotta either take it down or get a more permanent approval.
And that gives you that, it starts the timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would have event if you just only had it be a permit, it would be a free for all. But it wouldn't have to come to council and it wouldn't be, especially use permit that runs with the land and is, you know, for a fence, it's just like, hey, I have something, you could even, you could even.
So would that be like on a per item basis or just?
Yeah, I think that maybe we put a limit on the number of times you can do that, a calendar year.
I mean, I was going to say, I mean, I know, I know Rick fairly well, but I know he's trying to get into more of that type of stuff where I'm sure probably every week then he's going to be potentially wanting to get a permit.
Should go online with Jim Wright's new program, right? That new, do we go online and get it?
Yeah.
It's going to start costing you money, plus we don't want people abusing, abusing that, right? Like, oh, well, just every two weeks it'll be up and.
I mean, part of Dusty's like with the fencing and then part of his business, I mean, I know like when he had the truck out there and when he's had some stuff, it's actually drawn people into his business to like, hey, I want to do that, I want to do that. So obviously fencing and then, you know, negatively affect the business a lot, we don't want to do that. And obviously, I mean, I'm usually myself, from a DDA standpoint, I'm usually really against creating more laws and creating more ordinances because we have someone that abused a previous situation because then that only hurts the good businesses coming in. I mean, I know that there is an issue there, but it also kind of sucks because we had an ordinance that obviously the landlord of that property ignored completely with all the plastic stuff and went through and caused a lot of money, so we never got a resolution of that. So even if we do this ordinance, it's just gonna, if it continues, it's getting dependent on our ticket and then we just keep adding more attorney fees, I guess.
I mean, are you talking about the White Rose in the current situation?
Yeah.
Well, I know it's been exhausting with the White Rose, it's got to come to a conclusion at some point. And from that point, provided that we prevail, it's going to be a fast track for future litigation issue. Because I'll be able to point, look, the court ruled in our favor on this matter, so.
And Chris, for your knowledge, because you weren't here yet, there was a discussion earlier. In my opinion, it's only hearsay at this point, but I've heard it from private citizens and one of the tenants down at the property that Jay has sold that property.
I heard that rumor as well. I don't really want to bring it up. I heard that rumor as well.
Yeah, which is, I'm not mentioning names or any parties, it's, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, the people who told me, I have good trust and faith in them, that they're not blowing smoke, but I'm also, until I see a piece of proof or some sort, something of proof, it's speculation and hearsay. The other thing that I was going to ask is, in this definition, would it all make sense to make it exclusionary to retail goods?
That are goods that are available for retail sale?
Correct.
Immediate retail sale, as in I can walk on the property and walk off with that good?
Correct.
That's an interesting idea.
Somebody was on his card, remember?
That's a good point, right, that's a very good point, Brad.
Awesome.
We could do that, yeah, we could say, you know, "Goods available for immediate retail purchase shall not be considered outdoor storage," therefore don't require a permit.
Right, because ultimately, I'm sure if there was a manufacturing business in there or if there was a business that was stoking cold storage, oh, well, that RV back there is for sale. Okay, well, are you a retail business? Because then that becomes another zoning ordinance thing.
Well, yeah, it's like, what's for sale, well, can I hand you money and drive it off the lot? Oh, no, I don't have the keys, blah, 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 it's not optimal, okay, well, no, that doesn't count, right? And it does say inoperable vehicles, like, that's already in there. An operable vehicle doesn't count as storage, park. So if you do have a vehicle that's for sale, you park it somewhere, it's operable, it's got a license plate, it's all set, it's no big deal, you park things, you know. I think that goes, yeah, I mean, the other aspect would be, we did have the same issue with U-Haul was proposing there, you know, okay, they're going to rent their trailers out, et cetera, so I do like this idea, immediate retail sale.
Is U-Haul still there?
No.
Did you see where they moved down to the lambsden?
Oh, BG.
Good place.
Yeah.
Should work. Just got that trucking company there too.
Yep.
Got a good find, just out of our town again. We have the great people that have been nice to keep it here.
Right. Now, on the house switch from commercial to residence, I still, I mean, my personal feeling on that, I still kind of half and half, just because I understand the situation that happened, but then I get worried about too, is that we're strapping, I mean, if you live on Grand River, you're already, you know, in the commercial district, you're already kind of at a disband because you have such traffic going up and down your road. One of the benefits you have is the ability to convert your property to a business and then obviously subsequently convert back. I just would worry about, I mean, commercial properties, especially downtown, don't really sell for as much currently than what residential sells. So I'd be concerned with if we, if someone moved it, then it would basically be strapped forever with that. So instead of having, you know, someone that took their house, turned into a business, the business leaves, someone buys it, they want it back in the house because, you know, they decide not to and then the house just becomes abandoned piece of property forever because it's owned commercial and it can never be turned back into a house. And that, that would be my big concern, because then you're, you're basically, you know, funneling people into a corner that I just, I'd be worried about just because of that aspect of the difference in cost for a commercial building and residential, you know, and I would much rather see, you know, say for instance, Sonic Lodge, if they decided to turn that into a house, which it obviously must have been at one point, I would much rather see that be occupied than be abandoned. You know, just like the bank, if someone decided randomly, they're like, hey, I want to turn the bank into a house, I would be okay with that because it's not just a vacant building.
Are you aware of the specific issues that Jim has with the coding differences between a commercial and a residential property?
Yeah, not as much detail as he would be, but the electrical, the plumbing bathrooms in particular are fairly significant change. And that was a, that was an issue with Alpha Omega specifically while they were trying to convert that house, is that, you know, they basically moved in, plugged in this and created some computers and were ready, they were ready to go, which is a Euro business now and there's a list of building code items that have to be accomplished here. ADA requirements are another one. And going back to a house, it's like, alright, well now I have two single occupancy bathrooms instead of one bathroom and a shower. Now I got to put it back together again, or my kitchen's been ripped out.
I mean, is there any reason?
Turned into a kitchenette or an office and how am I going to put that next together?
Is there any reason that if the property owner put the building back into code with residential that it could then be converted? I mean, I know, to Josh's point, that's kind of adding extra hurdles and steps that if somebody didn't have the money for the resource to be able to do that, then they're kind of stuck in the water, but.
Yeah, I'm glad, like, if we do an inspection fee or, or inspection or something that would initiate the building part of that, I think would be great. I would be, just the wording you put on it may sound like, once it switches to commercial, it can never go back.
Yeah, which is, which is how it's written, it doesn't have to stay that way. It could, I think that Jim advocated to me to do this because he wants to stop these types of processes before someone moves in somewhere and is out of code compliance and he has to make a major renovation. You want to go and say, no, you're not allowed to do that before anything goes out of the rails. That said, we can put in the zoning ordinance that you shall not move in until you've met the building to have requirements for residential again, so that it's not, there's no like, oh, I'm allowed to do this, don't want to do my house. No, you can use it for single family, you can use it for residential, but now you've got to bring it back to residential standards before you move in and it says that right here. So we could jig out and soften it, but it would still get us language to enforce, hey, you know, this was a business last week and now you've been a residential tenant, we can't just be bouncing back and forth like that. You have to keep the building in the right code category.
I mean, would it all, at all be feasible to just have like a, kind of like a cooling off period of just, you know, okay, it converts to commercial, it has to stay commercial for X amount of time, be it six months, a year, and then same with residential is, okay, it converts back, but, you know, it's not going to be granted to go back to commercial for X period of time. I mean, if the issue really is just a rapid flip-flopping of, you know, one week it's this or next month it's that, I mean, that seems like the root of the problem.
We could do something like that. It all goes back to the issue of people asking forgiveness and not permission.
Right.
And if we get people in the office asking what they need to do, we can give them fairly simple answers. Now, we're not going to give them, doesn't mean, doesn't mean it's going to be cheap on their end in terms of the renovations or whatever, but the answer can be simple. And with your ordinance, it's very rarely, no, it's usually, here's what you have to do, right?
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that's something that just kind of, we could, we could do something like that. We could have a six month, you know, once you're this, you're that for six months and you're not eligible for something else.
Wasn't there a realtor signed out on this house for sale? Wasn't there a realtor that sold it to these people?
Yeah.
So how would they sell the people without having the right criteria to be a home resident?
Yeah, that one, that one in particular.
I mean, all of a sudden you sell a house.
It never got all the way to being a proof of business.
Somebody used to know, like, the renters said, okay, we're going to sell this as a home, the people walk in, there's no kitchen, and there's two boys and a girl bathroom and no shower. I mean, something's got to stop that for them to have to move in or even get the money to buy it.
We can, so.
I can do the inspection.
We would have already.
Somebody should have went through the inspection, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's true, we should, well, I think one of the species we can put in here is you must get a change of use permit to do that. You must get a zoning permit right before you do it. Now, which is already the rule, but it's the kind of thing that if way, somewhere else in the zoning ordinance that says like, you have to get a permit, and we could put it here where it says, so, I think what they're seeing, if they're checking the zoning ordinance at all, is, oh, in the commercial district, you let people have single family homes. And I wouldn't change that policy because you have so many homes that are in commercial districts. I mean, I do not, I mean, the last thing we're going to do is create problems for existing homeowners or even renters where the place they live in is hard to insure or borrow against because it's supposed to be commercial. It's not what we want to do. We want to allow those houses, it's the, it's the bouncing back and forth is the concern. So, I mean, I think that saying like, hey, if you want to switch from commercial to residential, residential to commercial, there's a process and here's what it is. You get a zoning permit and Jim Wright says, here are the renovations you must do before someone.
Because none of us were able to check it, right? None of us were able, because somehow somebody had, that was commercial, and if they did the kitchen changing and the bathroom changing, the residents can't go in there and have a resident home knowing that they were changed. I went out there a couple of times and there were drop cords running everywhere, so I don't know, I don't think they changed the electric.
No, they didn't, they just ran, they were. Yeah, yeah, they ran extension cords all over the house, is what they.
They asked, we come to your town and then, because we got the stuff in there for e-dresses we never had before that helped with Jim Wright's help to make sure people were safe in town. So now this, he should have been able to go out there and expect that home before they moved in to make sure it was okay, but we only do that with rental property. But something like that going from commercial to resident should have been, even have a flag up for a realtor to say, hey, look, this didn't meet all the criteria. You know, they definitely can't sell a house without a bathtub or a shower, you would think.
And then, well, I mean, I think with that situation, that is a kind of a unique property that has bounced back and forth quite a bit, you know, so it was again one of these unique situations that, you know, I mean, I think, I think what he's proposing of having a zoning change, I mean, honestly, when you do a zoning change anyway, you have to a public hearing, don't you know?
That's right. Does he do a zoning district change?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I think that would be good too, because you also don't want, you know, as much as I don't want to ban house or ban building in the town, I also don't want to see, you know, your next door neighbor that you live next to in the next 20 years sells it and it becomes a, you know, like retail business that people are in and out at all hours of the day. And so then that just changed completely like your, you know, your sellability of your house because all of a sudden there's a business right next to you that wasn't there prior.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, I think something like that would be good to have at least a little bit of a, you have to get her approval to, you know, be zone this and approval to go back to it.
We can also potentially take a look at the places where we have houses zoned commercial or village core.
Yeah.
That, because it's, the idea that I promoted 10 years ago, that we should push that zoning district east and west to allow for business growth may be dated, right? What you're saying, Josh, about the market?
Yeah.
And commercial and residential markets right now. So we have some blocks, especially going west of downtown, that are entirely residential. We could potentially ship them back, and if that's something you want, you guys want me to bring some information on, it would take some houses out of this system.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't necessarily have to change the master plan, so if someone wanted to take it back, they could do that.
Right.
But those are all requiring public hearings and that's very different than just renovating a house.
Yeah, I mean, I would rather, I mean, I think the Village Core and how you guys set it up before, I think is reasonable to give us a potential to broke down the road of, and again, it doesn't shoehorn people that, it gives people options for their property if they're on Grand River, which is, like I said, is, it is a benefit because you do, you're living on a very noisy road, noisy road that's constant traffic, you know, 24/7. So them having the option that they can go to commercial if, you know, might do it. I mean, right now, like obviously, like I said, residential is way high, but if the market turns, it might be, commercial might be the better choice to get rid of a piece of property or honestly, even if it happened to be, you know, for instance, a house that's rundown, maybe the best option would hold those and put a two-story building with apartments and all that.
Yep, and we have some empty lots too.
Right.
That were houses and could be, you know, mixed use or apartments or something that's more market driven. So I'm fine with it, the zoning districts can stay how they are, I just thought, if we wanted to lower the number of houses in this situation, we can do that.
Right.
So you got an idea what we need, so then we just schedule you a public hearing, so the next time we can throw that, something you come up with?
Uh, yeah, if you're comfortable with that. So what I'm hearing is, on the outdoor storage issue, decrease from 24 hours to 48, let's say goods available for immediate retail sale, maybe or rental, shall not be considered outdoor storage. And then on the houses, we create a system where it very clearly says, if you want to switch from residential to commercial or commercial to residential, you must get a permit for that, you must make the renovations before the new user moves in, which is supposed to go without saying, but, you know, and then you cannot change back for six months, once you flip over.
Without that said, what, does that mean that Jim Wright can go in to make sure that it was corrected?
Uh, yeah, once we get the building, once we get a building permit for the interior renovations, and yes, that permit gives them the ability to do that.
In my opinion, whenever it's commercial to resident, he should have been able to go out there and go, look, did this get switched back, so we can be ready to.
Yeah, and that, it's, it's right, we made it for somebody, mentioned that we do that for rentals, but not for homeownership. And I don't think we should have it for, we shouldn't do that to every homeowner, but in this particular situation, yeah, maybe saying you got to get an inspection as if you were a rental makes some sense.
Yeah, I'd be curious, the people that actually, realtors that sold, we have to make sure they met their right program too.
Yeah.
Alright, so I recommend to the council, we schedule a public hearing for the zoning and outdoor storage amendment for the meeting in December, we don't know if it's the one before or after. I've got a question here before we leave.
Yeah, do you just want to wait till Chris has the ordinance for you guys to vote on it and then schedule a public hearing?
We can't vote on it unless we have this public hearing. We can't vote on it unless we have this public hearing first.
Okay.
But we gotta make sure that she guys. Well, so your next meeting is?
December 12.
Yeah, so that's actually too close to do a public hearing, so you have to have 15 days' notice. So conceivably, I could.
I was just gonna put December, but, okay.
But I could, I could get the changes back to you guys for December 12 so you can see the changes before the actual public hearing, but you can still send a public hearing tonight. Are you having a second meeting in December?
Um, 19th.
Well, by 17, yeah. Just only a week apart, so is that even gonna happen?
Okay. The 19th, we can still, we can still notice a public hearing for.
I mean, why not?
We'll push it to January.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
We'll push it to January.
On that, so.
I just wanted to have it so we can put it on, on the public to know that we're actually gonna.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, schedule a public hearing, I think it'd be good, but yeah, I, I would just say in the midnight so you guys see the physical copy of it. That way you guys aren't doing basically discussion at public hearing in case something is, you guys notice is off and you're like, oh, wait a minute, this has to be changed and then you have to make an application.
So if you're.
A public hearing.
If you can have that ready for December 12 for their next meeting, and then we'll schedule a public hearing for January.
What hour?
Sometime in January.
Yeah. Either first or second.
But then, is it ninth your first meeting in January? Is that, that's.
It would be January 9th or January 23rd.
Yeah.
What am I?
It's on the second.
Actually, I'm more likely to be able to be here on 23rd.
The 23rd of December?
Of January.
No, of January.
Okay. 23rd of January, right, yeah. Remember me?
Let's see.
I just wanted to add, so the public knew what we were doing, so they had more time than just 15 days.
Yeah, this way it gives them like, quite, quite a better time.
Is there any more you want from us, Chris?
I don't think so, I'll have the.
So we'll try to, we'll try to get this all sewed up so on January 23rd, 24th is what we can vote on, and then in the meantime, you'll send us something else. Yes, sir.
Oh, just a quick question. I didn't hear the complete definition of what the outdoor storage was.
Okay.
The only part I heard was it had to have a roof.
Yeah, I'll read it again.
Okay.
Um, so here's what we've got, including the changes. To keep in an unroofed area many goods, junk, material, merchandise, equipment, inoperable vehicles, or trailers in generally the same place for more than 48 hours. Goods available for immediate retail sale or rental shall not be considered outdoor storage.
Does it still make sense to keep merchandise in there? Is that conflicting with retail?
That implies retail, cut that. Junk, by the way, is defined a term.
Yep.
And we also have rules on what is and is not an inoperable vehicle.
So by this definition, the roofed areas on the side of those buildings would not be considered outdoor storage?
That is, no, they would be, they are, oh, no, I'm sorry, no, they would not, they, yes, they would not be considered outdoor storage by this definition.
Gotcha.
Um, now we can change that.
Do you have a definition of what a roof is?
Yes, yeah, roofs, roof and walls are defined themselves.
Tarp, tent, considered a roof?
What?
Tarp, tent, considered a roof?
No, but we considered inadequate screening in the past when we were looking at a definition. You said if you've got a roof and you hang a tarp down from it, you can't see it, that's good enough. But you have to, well, putting up a tent where the roof is not permanent, that doesn't count.
And how do we feel about outdoor storage on those, I call them personally lean-to areas?
It's always nice to have something that's stored, they don't have to see them. So you have those on a lean-to and you have kept the little tarps rolled out and just seal it up, it looks nicer than driving by and you see it all outside.
Yeah, I guess my only trepidation is adequate screening is vague. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna see bright blue tarps hanging out, I think that would look worse.
The approach is you have 12-foot tents all around, we wouldn't have to talk about any of this, there'd be no one who's going out in there.
I, I mean, I have no objection to saying it has to be outside of a structure and when you get on, under a roof with no walls does not count. And the temporary walls, like tarps, don't count and things of that nature. Those are not, that's, that's still outdoor storage. I, I'm fine with that, we can be straight down on that.
Okay? I, I, I really don't know how I feel about it. I, I see the potential for abuse with it, I mean.
It's not because we have the abuse in that property.
Right.
And we had something that.
Stuff is stored under there now and gosh, it looks so much better than it has, but still doesn't look as good as it could be. But at, you know, at the same time, that really, in defense of the property, whoever that may be, it really restricts how they could use that property. I mean, you've got those great big overhang areas that you can't do anything with, put a picnic table under it.
Yeah, I mean, and some back part of that property that.
You used to store.
Generally, you can see it from your, from your apartment, it's hard to, they always look high in there.
I'm saying the east and west side of the outer, of the outer building.
Always looks nice. What? Head upstairs, head outdoors.
No store number there.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, it's stacked up, Joe, that's the difference, but like, say a row of campers.
That's true.
That's like.
You gotta find an outfit. What, what's, what's a consensus on that? Let me talk about what we're talking about. Those overhang areas, lean-to areas, is that outdoor storage if you put stuff there?
I think Josh's point is good, but it's, well, I guess you couldn't still store junk there, I don't think.
Well, it makes you, if you are storing junk, as we define it at all, your junkyard requires proper permits for that.
Exactly.
So it's actual garbage, then we have our rules.
Right.
If it's things you use for your business, which is where this is targeted at, then it's these rules.
Right, things for your business or if you did have a camper or something there that is cold storage, could be worse.
Yeah, I mean, having much campers lined up all the way underneath all there will look bad. If they're all smashed up campers, that's a different story, but.
Lots of junk people.
If someone's just storing, you know, I mean, yeah, I kinda look at that property because that's a very unique property too.
Yeah.
So you don't, you know, future owners of that, we kinda don't wanna have them have all these random lean-to that they can't make any money from.
Right, that's, that's my other concern with it. So, I, I guess I'm okay leaving it.
Unruled?
Yeah, as is with the exclusion of, of merchandise in that first sentence.
Okay. Yeah, so January 23rd, public hearing, revisions for December 12th meeting, which I unfortunately am in conflict with, but I can send someone to discuss the revisions and take notes if you want.
Or if you email over to Jessica, she has a super question, we can have Jim Wright show up with it, couldn't we?
That's true, I can see if Jim can be there that night.
Jim Wright likes to come like once every other month.
Yeah.
So you don't have to make a special trip since you live in Grand Rapids, in the gated community.
Actually, it's a pretty busy road. Uh, no, anyway, uh, yeah, uh, I'll, uh, I'll ask Jim if he can come that night and uh, give his respect on some of these items.
Sure.
Um.
Okay, any other questions? I think that'll work. Yeah, just have Jim Wright, he'll, he'll figure something out. Then the next meeting, we gotta make sure that we do the public hearings before the January 23rd, 24th.
Yes, so next meeting, you accept that, and then Jessica will do the notice and, there's plenty, plenty of time if you're January 24th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Special event for Matt Christmas Parade and tree lighting.
Make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Christmas parade tree lighting.
So was that him?
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Special event permit for a holiday event.
Ayes or two?
I make a motion to.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Lana.
Make a motion to approve the special use permit for the library to have a unicorn out in front of the library on November 29th between 6:00 PM and 8:00.
The move?
Second.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, now we're all out of.
Oh, sorry.
You got me going, the coldness kicking in.
I know, I was just.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the sweeper, everybody knows we have a sweeper, I haven't used in a long time. I do have somebody that's constantly has a sweeper that's, that is the same style that American Lincoln, it's an awassal, it would give us $2,500 for it, and he'll pick it up. I recommend to the council that we.
Please, Chris.
See, Chris, right, say.
Yes.
I recommend to the council that we sell the sweeper for $2,500 and they'll pick it up.
Are you allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Or do, or does that have to be publicly posted or?
It's a certain amount.
What's the amount?
Scott, who was looking it up?
I, I might post it, I just wanna do it right.
No, we, um, we've had it up there for quite a while and we, Ryan was supposed to post it, all you do is just post it on RIT, post it on some state, uh, program where you can sell items.
Yeah.
Being it's a sweeper, it's not a pickup, it's not a, it, I mean, it's got a special identification to it, not like a lawnmower.
Right.
I just, at this point, I was surprised if the guy said, hey, I can, he can take the parts off his that we have a hard time getting for ours. And he can make it work, he has a multiple, mobile home parts. Did you ever find what you paid for it?
It was like $50.
I didn't see it.
Oh, we got our money's worth.
Yeah.
We bought it for Perry. I brought it here. I mean, yours is a little bit. Oh, I was, so I was like.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. We had it eight years.
Hydraulic motors.
So it'd be like taking it to scrap here, basically.
Oh, that's quite a bit of money to get scraps on.
Yeah, these days.
No kidding.
So it's, it's not, it's a sweeper that goes down the road, it's not something you can drive, it's not, you know, trying to identify. The idea is what I was thinking, if you have somebody that will give you $2,500 as is and they'll pick it up. We did try to, Ryan was gonna list it on the state of Michigan, like website that lists, we're gonna do our chipper too, the old chipper. But the people that Ryan's talked to kinda said about the Tumblr being all out of shape is pretty much scrap. You just like sell the gas, it's just the rest of it.
Say a lot of those, a lot of states are, they don't even tell you.
Trying to figure out if you can do that or not, Scott?
I just, you just.
All right. So, wanna split while he's working on that to go to Pro Temp?
Sure.
All right, so Lana brought to our attention that you have to do it every year for somebody to be the vice president or Pro Temp while the president isn't in, in place. Does any of the council have any recommendation?
I recommend Lana Stanfield, president for a time for one year. Do I have a second? Okay, do we have another motion?
I will make the motion for Sam to be president of Pro Temp.
For who?
Sam.
Sam? Okay. Do I have a second?
Am I allowed to second?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Uh, we're on the Pro Temp.
Yeah. Sorry. We're happy to be about here.
Yeah, spinning wheel of death.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's, it's cold.
Yeah. We need better air up here, Josh.
You were just thinking, Josh.
I don't think so, that's why I kept my mouth shut.
Yeah. I'm not aware of anything repulsive yet, but, but I have Scott. And the question goes to whether or not you can vote on this.
Well, if I can second the motion. There was a motion.
Oh, it's in the motion stat?
So we're trying to figure out how to get, yeah. Lana wanted to put on item Pro Temp one year, she told us that every year we have to vote on that.
And the, and the motion on the floor is to.
So I'm.
So you may.
I'm pushing to have me do it.
The question is, can I second that?
Go back to, just working for each of that.
Then we take a bet to sign motion and she can second this out.
True.
So technically, there's a motion on the floor right now, and it's settled first.
But there's no second, so it's failed. Well, first one.
Pause, we get a second.
Right, so really, there's nothing on the floor right now, we get a, a motion, not second, another motion, not second, and then the final line of it.
Or you, we can cut this off, you can make a recommendation.
I was thinking that.
You can, but strategically, you can, you can second. Second.
Okay, we gotta go backwards, cause then Lana.
I didn't know I could, I didn't speak up, cause I thought that.
Motion failed and it.
Both motions have failed, so we can start over again, but Deborah first said Lana, and Lana did motion, but second.
Yeah, I didn't think I could, so I kept quiet.
So is there anything in there that says that the, and I, I was just letting the council, the president have to make the recommendation of the vice president or the Pro Temp, or could it be recommended by the council also?
Saying, good point, I feel like it might have to be a recommendation from the president.
Sure.
I'm trying to think back.
It says the council shall appoint one of their number, president of the council, according to six, um, 65.3 of the General Law Village Act, Act 3 of 1895.
Okay, so you're going to state statute, you're not inside our ordinance, is that right?
Um, it's the Michigan compiled laws, that's right here, you're gonna see it.
Yeah, MCL. And what was it, 65?
There you go. Out of the books that we were given.
Yeah.
Out of the general law village charter.
So why is the press not working?
That was a question for you, Scott. Why does it stop working? Why is the press not working? Today?
It was working, that's good. It froze, it's cold.
Downstairs too? Downstairs too?
Luckily downstairs is working.
Oh, we should have moved downstairs, is what you're telling me.
Oh, yeah.
I get mine too. You mean, you could have been downstairs and warm?
I know.
That's cold.
You knew a little more, you made it...
Seven two six three.
Fix it, please?
Now that it's ready, we're getting ready to end. Josh is gonna want it fixed.
I swear, that fixes it.
I know, it's like...
If the hammer doesn't fix it, I'll die and light up.
Oh, you really broke it now.
Well, no, I, I'm thermostat, so I reset the thermostat, and that, especially with those aquabees. That's what happens, is they kinda lose their mind.
And then, so you reset it, it'll come back?
Hopefully.
Like I said, he'll get it running, and by the time first leave, as where all the ice keeps, my nose, I can't even feel my nose, it's like an icicle.
I'm a super warm person, so I can't even imagine, because I'm really cold. So I can't imagine people that normally not like...
The rest of us that are really cold are really, really cold.
I can't even feel my toes, and I lose my mind.
Can I accept that, too?
Sandra, if you, if you get a hold of them, where they can paint their minds.
Yeah.
Do you have, where, you got Shane's number to give to them, or collaborate?
I do, I do got Shane's number.
Okay.
Yeah.
The next week, or the next couple of weeks, it looks like they might have a little window where they could stripe that. Is everybody, if we can get somebody to do that, does everybody think that's a good idea?
Yeah.
To stripe that road, that little piece on Main Street.
And I don't know how busy they are, though, so I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you know as soon as I know.
If Rusty were here, he'd say do it in the spring.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm gonna go do it in the paintwork, I miss that guy. He'd be all over this right now.
They usually, the county don't, I know, like, when they did Williams, Williams, Ansville, they didn't paint those lines until the next spring. And I mean, that's a pretty major road.
We got new roads in this town, some people need to know where that's cool. They used to go by the bumps and the holes, or how they got through the road, like, where am I at?
I wouldn't just drove down the middle anyway.
Yeah.
The potholes were right on the sides.
Well, real quick, before, um, because I'm trying to narrow down this answer, this, the way, although this announces, um, the obligation of, uh, appointing mo, uh, mayor, uh, president Pro-Tep, um, it doesn't give any guidance as to the actual procedure involved, but it does say, on November of each year, or as soon after that, at, I'm sorry, on November twenty of each year, or as soon after that date as possible. So, I can keep looking it up right now, if it's very second, or if you guys wanna set this onto the next meeting, we can. What's that?
One year is working.
Yes.
Oh, I, I just don't, I feel bad, like, I'm looking through this.
No, you don't, you don't feel bad, so the next meeting will be, or soon after, alright, is everybody okay with that?
I'm cool with it.
Oh, alright, so then, what about the...
It's not your street sweeper, right?
What, when you throw, what, what do you think when I throw a bag, just $2,500, because we didn't let the public know we're selling a sweeper? Because it's there, that money's gonna be spent on, we already spent it on our, our new truck that's doing awesome job, so...
Yeah, the, uh, my only thought with that is, it's kinda unique, because like you mentioned, it's not truly a vehicle, um, but at the same time, if we know the amount of $2,500 is being offered for that.
Yeah.
The only alternative I can think of is that if we put it out to the public, to put the public on notice, like, hey, this public, uh, sweet, street sweeper's going for $2,500. Is there anyone that is willing to pay more than that within so much time? Otherwise, the sale will be confirmed without any other interest.
And that's true, and I, I tried to get Ryan to put it on the website to see if anybody would bite on it. The most he ever seen him was thirty-five hundred and top four thousand, which was a better state than ours. So ours would be, like, ours needs parts, and the parts that they would need are the ones that this guy had, so... Uh, $2,500, I, I guess at this point, it's, it's taking up, it's leaking oil, and it's taking up space in our shop. We got a brand new truck, we want the municipality and the people knowing that our, shutting new trucks that are left outside, where a sweeper's in shop trying to get it for sale, but really that outside. Then that'll go to Michael's down at Howell, because that's what'll be left of it. It'll be scrap.
Uh, I think that's why, um, part of the reason they do that is because it's, obviously, it was purchased with taxpayers' dollars, so then, that's supposed, you're supposed to get the most from an asset as possible for the taxpayers. Is how they always look at, like, other municipalities, when I read their minutes, that's how they have to do it, because they're, you know, they need to make sure it's fair, but you also wanna be fair to the taxpayers, to make sure you're getting the most of my money, because it's not like it really matters in this instance. But, obviously, you don't want them to have anything happen where someone from even the village comes and says, hey, I won't pay for it.
Yeah, you might drive around a town with a sweeper there, or drive it to the bar with it.
I mean, it doesn't seem like that would be the thing, but...
I'm willing to take that chance.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty amazing to me, because I, I follow a lot of Michigan auctions, state auctions, that they put stuff in, like, some of the stuff they put on there, and how much money, people bid that stuff up as, like, baffles my mind. Where it's like, obviously, you really want that, and you did not want to let it go, because, you know, there was a boss plow, um, just recently, and it was for like a two thousand series truck, um, Chevy truck, and, and I'm going for six grand. And I was like, it's all rusty, like, it made a mold? Yeah, it's like, but someone, someone wanted that bad.
How many days do you get the, what do you do, put it on the site for? Anybody wanna give us more money than $2,500 for the thing for next meeting? Why not? That guy's gonna move, uh, how about that? And then you're still gonna have it.
Hey, I'm fine with $2,500, I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the same boat.
I'm okay with that, yeah. It's a great area, yeah. You just gotta know when to pull them, you know what I mean? I'm trying to...
I mean, as long as we have somebody who's interested, because in three weeks' time, he might not be.
You gotta find the guy that wants a sweeper that's ninety, ninety, that knows how to work on them, to fix them, to work they're doing. And we bought it from Perry, we used it probably a half a dozen times, and after that, we never used it, it was, it was a bad idea, it didn't work.
Why don't you, uh, here's just a random suggestion, why don't you just put a seven day thing on it? Post it at the village on the window, you know, that's...
Ryan was supposed to did all that.
Yeah, and for seven days, you know, maybe if Scott needs to do more research, he'd know by then, but if by seven days, doesn't, no one comes in with an offer, then you did your due diligence of trying to offer it off, and if no one takes it, then...
Can you hold them on for seven days?
You just gotta know that we have to post it for seven days.
Yeah.
I mean, that gets kinda in the middle.
So what do you, what do you, what do you post that, on Facebook, that we're selling a sweeper?
Just post it on...
Post it on Facebook, you post it.
Facebook on the door.
Put a sign on the door by the library.
So even in the formal competi, uh, formal competitive bidding process, I mean, this is above, to be honest, it's heavy duty buying, but it, the obligation is, uh, notices inviting sealed competitive bids shall be published at least once in a newspaper, journal, village at least five days before final, uh, submitting a bid. So even, there's only five days of requirement, even in the formal competitive process, um, so... I mean, do you, do you recall what it was purchased for originally? I mean, the price?
I think the original price, in my opinion, I think it was fifty-nine hundred, I don't think it was ninety-five, whatever, it was five thousand nine hundred dollars, it was both six thousand bucks.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's eight years ago.
Oh.
And now the guy's willing to give us $2,500, and the parts that don't work on it, to use it now, you could drive it back and forth to the bar, but you're not gonna make it work. Alright, you only go as what, the, the, the twenty-one dollar, no?
Uh, fifteen, twenty.
Yeah. The cats, they're not even, I live in it.
What would it say, though, would it basically be a silent auction of, starting bid is $2,500? You could post it for five grand, and nobody would take it, but you could post it for twenty-five, someone else in it, now you're snuffing this guy. So I don't know what the listing would look like. It's a good idea, I just don't have it.
Starting bid, twenty-five.
Yeah, that's how I would do it, starting bid, my $2,500 posted for the five days.
Posted on my bid for five days.
That was what Ryan, Ryan was supposed to put on the state of Michigan, I asked him at least three, four times, never got to it, correct? We did talk about it, that, and the chipper, because the chipper can't go on there, because it won't work, so it sounded like it goes to Michael's, but it still should go on there, same at the drums bed.
Well, you can, you can sell stuff that doesn't run on my bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, like you said, my bid, yeah, at halftime, it says, might not work or on no condition.
On no condition, that's it.
You know, I want to...
So who's smart enough to put this sweeper on my bid at this point, so it's on every five days? Other than my tissy rolled fingers, who's got it?
No idea.
I'd be on my bid, but it shouldn't be that difficult, so I mean...
Yeah, they'll say, or, I mean, Shane, once giving you the information, take a couple pictures, I can store it on there, but... So, figure out how to sign up for it, but...
Shane's, Shane's left its ideas, just max out them, they can use the info. The last thing we did, this is coming easy to us, but ask all during the summer, that we're not using it, so we should get rid of it. Now somebody wants to do it, pick up these with it, and the leaves will be protected for it, this'll work, and they'll just sit there, rot and drip oil onto the concrete again for another year. Is anybody on Facebook say they want to buy it for $3,500?
No. There isn't any comment on that.
None?
At least they're warm.
Yeah, they're warm. They're sitting in their toasty houses.
Is that, that, that's a diesel, isn't it? It's a diesel, too.
It's kind of junkyard, anyway.
So what's the penalty if I say I just allow this? What do I do, like, a step in the hand, or?
Camera cheesecake for you.
Yeah. I've heard, I've heard worse things that happened, and nobody even wore a tether. A simple thing, you, you, we're not using it, there's a POS, and somebody else can put in parts on it, they're gonna use it, and voila, wrong time of year, nobody's gonna be sweeping, we're gonna be plowing. And it's taking up space.
I already heard the phone over at the player hall the other day.
Oh, yeah?
And I was like, my dog was getting upset, and I'm like, what is he getting so upset about, holding me in front of the desk, I'm like, oh, just keep it there, don't mean it.
Let me track up a presence. And I'm not seeing anything on point that gets me to where I wanna be on this, um...
We'll just post it, and then, go for bear.
Or just do, like you said, just do the five day on the front of the year, and then, if no one shows up, then he comes to...
Five days.
Yep.
Now we covered our pitch.
Yeah.
Take this and cross out person, and then put that, that's for sale, five days, put it around the window. Right?
Around the window, and throw it off in the rear, just to...
Yeah.
I doubt anyone will want it, though.
Yeah.
You gotta wait five more days.
Okay. So, vote up, we still don't know, sweeper, we can't, no.
You could do a contingent on that.
Contingent what?
Contingent on a higher bid. You could vote to sell it, contingent on a higher bid.
Pretty.
Good idea.
I like it, good thinking.
Yeah, then that way you guys don't have to grab it.
$2,500, one pair.
And then that way, he can have it in five days.
Right, and his $2,500 would be considered the high bid.
Right.
Right? Okay. We really have pictures, somebody sent pictures, right? I got pictures, but... Again, huh? We need to vote on it?
Yeah.
Alright. So, we learned all that, got it all set up, so...
Do you brown out men's, who wants to move in the second?
So, five days, we're gonna post it. I recommend that we're gonna post it for five days, to see if they don't think, give us more than $2,500 for the street sweeper. And in that, if that doesn't happen, they'll automatically go to the...
I'd just say highest, highest bidder.
Highest bidder.
Yeah. Highest bidder.
So... Okay, so will Lana second, right? Sam, go.
Shelby?
Yes.
Shomer?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Bitcha?
Yes. Hey, we'll fix that. Alright. So we're gonna just turn it on the window, or we're gonna try to turn it on Facebook, or...
It's up to you guys.
Well, it's, it's on the window, I'm thinking that would be good, because that's considered closing.
Alright, are we done?
Nope, I, I wanna make, I wanna make a statement, the, with Shane, he does take our phone home, so he will be able to use, I know some people have questioned, the pickup to go to and from his home and back to work. He will continue to be able to use that only to and from his home, while he carries the phone, and he has done that for us, and he does take the calls, but there's 911 calls, he takes them. So, in that event, we give a $2 raise to Ryan, and we've already been doing the pickup with Shane, I just wanted to clear the council that I'm allowing that to happen, so he has a vehicle to go back for.
Hey, well, Shane goes on vacation or deer hunting, the vehicle stays in the village.
If it works out, I don't see where that's gonna problem, the statement is, that pickup goes to and from his house for Shane, if he's gone for a period of time, he'll make a recommendation, or he'll make accommodation of having to stay here for us.
Okay, so there's two trucks, then, then you go.
Yep. But see, that, most of the time, he would love to have a two vacation.
And when, when I got hired, I brought that up, downstairs, council chambers about that, and Rusty said that that was, we allowed, pull the fork supervisor to ask to do that, and that's...
Oh, we get that accommodation. Yeah, really, that's a great accommodation for you, because, look, look what happened during the tornado, and the wellhouse, and you had to get here.
Yeah.
There is nothing, no problems with that.
Appreciate it.
We're just discussing, like, if you go off on, on to your vacation.
Yeah, and I always, I always do ask them, I said, you guys want the truck? And, a lot of times, I say, no, I went, um, I went out of town two days last month, I guess, or this, earlier this month, and...
Caritas.
When you get those calls, when does your time start?
Means your kids in the truck.
Yeah, why, you, cover.
He, you know, that's never been a, with, and the, the comment that somebody asked me, uh, rage, phone conversation was, I couldn't answer it, but the truck stayed at his location, while his wife took him to the airport, and then she picked up the airport, the village truck stayed at his home. He didn't use that to go to the airport, drop him off, he used his own personal vehicle, didn't charge his mileage, so, I couldn't answer it at the time, I asked Shane when he got back.
I don't trust my wife driving that truck. John's a person, drive my truck, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I think everybody's all set?
Oh, yeah, they're, um...
We got one comment?
Yeah, which said, uh, is in the, is a metal awning a rough?
No.
Which that probably is a question for Professor Cory, or...
Kind of cool. I would say yes, metal awning.
That's permanent.
It's like...
Yeah, it's like, probably, or carport is what they're probably referring to.
Yeah, roof, is, was, Chris Cory mentioned, is defined by, uh, building code or international property man's code, so, whatever that says.
Yeah.
So I mean, a metal, yeah, I don't really, I don't know what that would be.
Metal roof, carport, it could be the metal awnings over the windows.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a pergola that has metal on it. I mean, an awning is a, that comes off a roof, or comes off the side of a house, or whatever.
That's what an awning is.
Right, so I mean, that's the question, so I'd probably just say, you know, I mean, probably be...
I would say, look at the definition of roof in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Or just, you know, uh, talk to Jim Wright, the ordinance officer. It's a carport, not an awning. You said.
Make a motion for your...
Second? Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say aye? You're done.